Well, hello and good evening, everyone.
Hello, Stephen.
I get a little bit more light over here. Give me one second.
Dial in, so I'm using the phone on you. I'll be there momentarily.
Alrighty, thanks for letting us know. So Mike, you'll have to remind me which of the two of you are subbing in tonight. I know we have a pitch. You're a server. Alright, well, we appreciate you coming out tonight.
Oh, yeah. Exciting agenda, just the one item.
We'll hopefully make it quick.
City Hall open now, Stephen?
You know, it's interesting. So what we're doing is right now we are reopening to the public, but on an appointment only basis. So we've set up in-person counter visits. So we have a tool on our website to visit the city planning department page, or actually a lot of our other departments are doing as well. You can do, we were using Microsoft booking, take a time and, and date that works for you and you can just physically show up.
How about you? How about you personally? Do you work in the, in the, in the office or mostly at home?
Uh, we've never stopped working in the office. But I'm occasionally working remotely when it makes sense on usually Wednesdays and Thursdays. Alright, well, I'm see that we're joined by our second planning commissioner. So let's go ahead and get started.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Is Stuart not here?
Mike is actually substituting for Stuart tonight. He had a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay, cool. Hi, Mike.
Ready. So we've got a short agenda tonight, just one item on the SARC. I'm gonna pull up my presentation here. Yeah, so the first and only item is 2041 South Winchester Boulevard. Just to help familiarize ourselves with the location. So this is located behind Merrill Gardens in Campbell. So it is west of Winchester. It's on the west side of Winchester Boulevard, behind Merrill Gardens, which is a mixed-use assisted living community here in Campbell, and is also located south of West Campbell Avenue. The project site is on PD or Plan Development. It has a central commercial land use designation. It's in the Winchester Boulevard master plan, I should mention, and what we're talking about tonight is, is almost effectively a reinstatement of an existing fake tree pole or poe tree pole facility here in Campbell. And as you're seeing here in the pictures, I'm, it's kind of hard to see even from the street. This is kind of effectively a perspective even from onsite. I'm taking this from the parking lot over here at the gas station, Arco Gas Station. Or a little bit off to that. And then you're seeing it at a distance. It's kind of blending of the canopy of trees, but as you zoom in, you can effectively see the, the canopy of that, of that facility. So, um, big picture. This permit's expired. So what they're doing is they're going through a permit process to allow for it to be reactivated effectively. They did apply prior to it expiring, but they've been going through this process with myself and our department as we're trying to facilitate permit application requests. Our code formally recognized it as a concealed facility as it does add a physical site improvement. In this case, it's a, it's a tree. Because of the tree's height, it requires a height exception, which I think we talked about in greater detail in the report. And really what the purpose of this process is, is to, now that we have a new wireless ordinance, and we have brand new wireless facility design requirements, we're evaluating this tree pole against current standards. And we're trying to identify those areas where this design might be improved or enhanced based on those standards. And just here on the screen, I've got, this is a link to, this is our wireless facility design requirements cover sheet. We also have all these standards about trees in general with included within that packet. So we have policies which encourage you to maintain the natural canopy of the, of the tree, the shape. We also talk about branch densities and branch and finishing types. So we talk about the types of leaves that you install on a facility. And in light of all those design requirements, we went through them with staff. We pulled out just a couple, which we felt were warranting a discussion tonight. The first was on branch length, and we were asking is whether or not the tree branches of this particular facility should be extended to completely envelop all tower mounted equipment and extend beyond the tower mounted equipment by at least 18 inches. So again, that's a standard our code, the intent is to make sure that all the equipment is adequately screened and hidden. And if you're looking at the equipment here in the bottom right, you do have these panels. But these panels are wrapped with a leaf sock enclosure. So it does mimic the branches, but you kind of lose that the branch appearance when you are looking at like a flat panel. Even when it is socked. The second question we're asking is should the branch color be changed? Each time we look at one of these when they come up for renewal, they're going back through this permit process is whether or not they've been faded or they've been weathered in such a way, I mean, if you imagine you're a patio umbrella, you put out in the sun enough years, it can fade. And not all too similarly, the equip, the, and the needles themselves can fade in sunlight. They, they're subject to UV exposure. And so we want to make sure that we're maintaining that appropriate color tone for the tree that at least fits in with a range of live, live, real trees. Doesn't have to be perfect, but the idea is it should be in, in, in the color fam, the color range. And the last question is, should additional branches be added to this particular facility to ensure canopy density of at least three branches per foot? Now, what's interesting on this particular point, the code's not, when, when we drafted the wireless facility design requirements, we weren't super clear what we meant by that. If we were talking about the full length of the tree or talking about just in the areas affected by the antennas, but I think minimally the intent would be around the antennas. If we increase, increase branch density towards the top of the tree, it could help offset some of this the, the kind of a square paneled look that you see even at a distance. And one exhibit that we have here on screen, here on the bottom left, this is just an example of how you can quickly and easily add additional antennas, these additional branches behind the the H-frame mounting brackets that these antennas are mounted onto. So these kind of bend and they pull these antennas over and in front of these branches over and in, over and in front of the antenna. So you're kind of seeing that mounting technique and what that does is it does break up that longer panel look. So that's just one way of implementing it. Longer panels might need two sets of branches like this, but that's a really last question we have for the SARC tonight. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you have. And there are a lot of discussion points which are raised in the report, which I didn't really cover in my presentation. If you have any questions on those, if you want to talk about these points, I'd be happy to do so.
Stephen, I have a question. So is this going to, I see this as a, I think a PLN item number. That means it's a, that mean it's a discretionary approval at some point?
That's correct. So it is a discretionary planning entitlement. This is gonna, it's a conditional use permanent site and architectural review. And given the fact that it require, it's going to be requiring a height exception to kind of reestablish the height that it currently exists. It's going to go to the SARC, as we're seeing tonight, the planning commission, and then upon recommendation of the planning commission, we'd be advancing this more than likely to the, the city council for final decision.
If this didn't require a height exemption, would this still have to go through a discretionary process?
As it presently stands, yes. And every time, every 10 years, this, this permit will come up for renewal will require a reevaluation against current standards. So a good question is, as far as Ah, yes.
The renewal discretionary as well?
Okay, renewal is discretionary as well. So, and I can clarify a little bit more. As far as our administrative processes concerned, when we adopted our new wireless facilities ordinance, the intent was to try to get some of these routine stealth facilities, stealth concealed antennas to be handled at an administrative level, the director level. And this is the first time this facility is coming to our attention since the adoption of the new ordinance. So we, we're going to have a couple of facilities which do and do not meet the requirements better than others. If you're familiar with any of the cell sites which are not even tree poles or just poles, just stat freestanding with antennas fully exposed, those will be very difficult to go through this permit process, but it will be discretionary. So it's not going to be a mandate that the planning commission or city council, if it goes to council, approve those requests, but we're trying to make sure that these are at least in line with our, our new standards, our new expectations. Right? So in, as this, once this facility is approved under the new ordinance, the ordinance then provides the administrative remedy, administrative option for renewal. And in which case, the director every 10 years would be administratively processing a request for an extension and just really just checking to make sure usually that the tree is just not falling apart, it's not disintegrating, the branches haven't faded, that kind of, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so going forward, any renewal will have to be, like anything that hasn't already been renewed by us will have to be renewed by the planning commission, possibly city council in light of the standards. But after that, renewals will be able to be processed administratively?
Yes, that's effectively correct.
And any new tower would go through us again?
Correct.
Okay, that, that was, that was my question.
Yeah, Stephen, so I'll ask just a couple of quick, quick ones is, you didn't, it didn't come up in your verbal presentation, but I think it was in the written, but I think we're going taller with this tree? Is there any some height or no?
This, this facility is not increasing in height. It did go taller than when it was originally approved by the director years ago because they went through modifications of that facility through a separate process called an eligible facilities request. But at the end of the day, this facility is proposing no changes. They're not adding any antennas, they're adding any, any RRUs, they're not adding any equipment cabinets, and they're not increasing the height. The height exceptions required because it's taller than what the city would otherwise allowed, allow. And because it's going through a brand new entitlement process, because it's not subject to the extension process at this time, because we adopted a new ordinance, it is for one time having to go through to reestablish that height that's been granted.
And then, okay, then I, I guess I did. That's good to know. I was, had a different impression, but maybe I'm getting confused with our next item on our regular agenda, but in your written presentation here, Stephen, you had this, I'm trying to get to with the graph with the coverage area. And I didn't know what the, the, the two shades, you know, there's the blue and the pink, and then there's a deeper blue and a deeper pink within that. What, what is that, what is that showing us?
So we could jump there real quickly and I can show that we're
At the bottom, at the very end of the presentation.
Yeah, so I want to make sure we're all, we're all seeing the same thing and talking the same language. I think I'm sharing right now. Interesting stuff outlined.
Yeah, good.
Okay, well, great. So, yeah, so these are showing coverages. Our applicant can maybe speak to them a little bit better. They're a little bit different than from what I've typically seen. Showing in, in building coverage versus outbuilding coverage and coverage limits.
Oh, okay.
So I, I can say for what it's worth, this particular facility is being indicated as the eight, five, the longer range, eight, five, six, five, seven, seven. That's the start here. That's the site location. So they're effectively showing what coverage looks like with and without that particular cell site. My guess is that this is the overlapping coverage area. Yeah, I can't say this map is perfect because even if this is outbuilding coverage, there should be a separate co-centric ring here for the in-building coverage within this area. Maybe they're saying the coverage limits of this are duplicative, so they provide secondary coverage. But I could have them speak to it possibly more.
Now that's it. Yeah, thank you.
And any other questions from the commissioners before we kind of kick it over to our, our, I do see Nicole is an attendance tonight representing the applicant's team. Maybe she could speak to the, these RF exhibits. Go ahead. I see Nicole's hands raised. Go ahead, Nicole.
I think that might be showing, are you hearing me right now, Stephen?
I am.
I don't know why it's showing as Nicole, probably because I maybe came in through that link or something, but this is Jake Hamilton, the applicant. Anyway, I can speak to the coverage map. We are getting a coverage map that is more indicative of what you're used to seeing, but basically it's showing that there is a taller site that kind of is an overarching coverage gap and is closing that from a outdoor and from a voice perspective, and then you have lower tech and technologies that are essentially higher bandwidth that are filling in that coverage area with more robust coverage so that you can use your phone for streaming, watching video, indoor coverage, all the things that we really actually do. So that site is indicated there, rooftop 216 feet. That's a separate site and that was probably older and it's higher and it's meant to cover from a voice perspective, whereas within that large range, you're going to have a lot of lower sites are going to fill in that density so that you can actually use your phone for the things that we all use them for, more of the data type of uses.
Yes, if I'm understanding correctly, this is a macro site. This is, I think in the pre yard office towers, just based on its location. It's up on one of the upper floors. Or maybe even on the roof as And yeah, so it's providing broad coverage to make sure that people can at least do basic phone calls, but this would be more of their And yeah, so it's providing broad coverage to make sure that people can at least do basic phone calls, but this would be more of your your high speed, it looks like. And the reason for the separate color maps, I don't think we got into that, but this effectively, the the pink is the T-Mobile coverage and the AT&amp;T consistently branding is the is the blue.
Oh, yeah, no, I knew the red and blue. It was just the deeper, the deeper colors. Jake, Jake, can I ask you, who, I don't, who actually is the applicant? Is this Crown Castle? Is it AT&amp;T? Is it uh?
It is Crown Castle. They own the infrastructure. So in other words, they own the tower. They lease space to AT&amp;T Mobile. And then we pay rent to the landlord, or sometimes we have a permanent easement that we've paid years ago for a one-time fee. I believe this one is a um, landlord less seed type of relationship, where we're paying a landowner and then we sublease space on the tower to tenants, who would be the carriers.
Where where is who again? Crown Castle?
Yeah, Crown Castle is a tower company, essentially.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to say, who are you? You are with Crown Castle?
That's right. They hire me.
That's all I'm asking. Yeah, I couldn't tell. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, any discussion or questions, conversation about this tower, this this facility?
I I'd like to throw in that um, I took a bike ride out there last week to, you know, I I tried to not look up exactly where it was. I just knew that it was west of, on the west side of Winchester in that that area. Um, I just had the address, so I I went there and I tried to go behind the building and looked around. And I actually couldn't tell which, like, I couldn't pick out, oh, that looks like not a tree. This may just be because I didn't go to the right place, or I'm very bad at picking out trees. But in terms of how well the current camouflage works, I'm like, it worked for me. Um, I certainly understand um, wanting to standardize our uh, wireless ordinance. I mean, that's why we have ordinances in the first place. I ideally, it would be a little bit more um, um, objective, so that uh, there wasn't uncertainty on the part of the applicant. I certainly wouldn't want the applicant to have to move the like, to to move the tower or something like that. Um, in terms of the the issues brought up, um, judging from the pictures and from my visit there, I don't think the color needs to be changed. It does look like if the branches were extended to cover the equipment more, it would look even more camouflaged. Um, which I think is a reasonable um, ask for updating it. It seems like it doesn't require major structural alteration, and it would improve the appearance of it. That's my position on that.
Yeah, you know, well, I I actually drove out to the site today, and I, my uh, experience is exactly the same as Adam's there. I was looking, I was looking around for it. I know this Stephen's staff report talks about uh, some effort or some uh, investigation on Crown Castle's part for looking for other sites, but uh, this really does seem like a one, I really an ideal site for this type of facility. It's uh, it's so well-hidden back there. And you know, yeah, it's really, and I I drive by that intersection, you know, thousands of times. I never knew, I never, never noticed the 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 tree until I was looking for it today, so uh, and I'm I'm sure the city's probably gotten no complaints, right, Stephen, or anything like that about this?
Yeah, we have not received any complaints about it. I I can also attest to how difficult it is to get to this particular tree.
Yeah, no, it's it's hard to find. I guess I would only say on behalf of the citizens of Campbell and the citizens everywhere, I guess I I would ask a question of Jake, if I got the name right. In terms of Crown Castle, I've seen a lot of the, you know, a lot, I think we've all seen a lot of these tree mono pines, the tree uh, facilities. And some of them look pretty good, and some of them, you know, don't look that great, but I I and I know it's hard to get it, you know, too nice, uh, but ideally, you know, the, I I guess I'm wondering if Crown Castle and and the other cell tower companies are still working and on R&amp;D and trying to improve these trees so they blend in even better. The colors are, you know, are always and I know every tree, every tree in nature is slightly different color, right? But uh, I think the colors in general can blend in better on almost every site I've seen. And I think the leaves can be a little more quote-unquote realistic. I don't think anybody wants to put any undue burden, any cost on anybody, but uh, I guess I would just say, I I'm hoping that these trees are improving as, you know, new generations of trees go up and more and more of these cell towers go up. Uh, you know, they, obviously, they can be better. When you do look for it, it does, you know, it does stand out, stick out. And in some locations, not this one, this one is is really a great location, I think, but uh, in some locations, they really stick out. So I guess that's really my only kind of macro comment, but in terms of this facility, you know, I think it's, I think it's pretty good. I I, you know, I don't know if there's a way to shade the color, so it does match those trees right next to it better, uh. You know, if the leaf coverage can be, you know, a little bit better, it would be nice. And I, you know, how much this costs and the opportunity cost, et cetera, you know, I don't know, but uh, I think it's a it's a pretty good, pretty good site and pretty good facility.
And yeah, I think, go ahead and go ahead and respond.
Yeah, I noticed on this particular tree too, if you'd look at the imagery, say on Google Earth, and it's from August of twenty twenty, they would do the street view, and you look at it from, I believe, February twenty twenty-one, you can tell that the tower's been completely rebranched in terms of coloring, because when you get to aerial, you can see that it's taken on a little bit of a bleached green. And from the street, the color that is now is pretty fresh. I mean, that's um, I don't wanna say as green as they get, but it is a fairly realistic color right now. And to answer your other question about the tree technology and stealthing technology in general, the trees are getting exponentially better all the time. The technology is getting better. I mean, wireless technology really didn't even start till the nineties, as far as stealthing goes. And one of the challenges we have, and Stephen knows this also, is that we kind of look at it through a different lens in that when you built an apartment building in the nineties with vinyl siding and circular windows, and a lot of architecture elements that we would never do now, but they don't have the burden of coming back every ten years and having to essentially re-site the home, chop off the top floor, and take really costly measures to bring it into compliance with the current code when it was built to the code at the time and built legally. That's one of the big challenges we have. If it's a new tower, absolutely. We comply with the code and whatever is needed height limit. If it's not, we get a variance, everything is on the up and up, but it is really challenging on these existing sites to make them conform to a code that didn't exist when we built it. Reason being is a twofold. Number one, just structurally. The towers are specifically built structurally to handle the wind loading and the weight of what's on the tower. And they do build in some a little bit of leeway for additional carriers, but that can be different depending on when it was built. Those branches do add a lot of wind loading, because as the wind comes through, that adds more resistance to it, and it has to be built for that. And sometimes with, if you look at these antennas, they're pretty tight together. So I'm not sure it's quite as easy as adding branches, or even the pictures that were shown that were, I don't know where that design feature came from with the branches attached to the back of the antennas, but it wasn't for me. And not that it can't be done, but that's something that you kind of have to start from ground zero and do a structural analysis of the tower. See what can and can't be done, and very often it does come down to needing a tower replacement, and that can be a half million to a million dollar proposition that changes the entire scope. That obviously we want to avoid for, you know, capital reasons, which do matter to us. And sometimes it doesn't matter to the jurisdiction, the capital cost, but obviously, to us, that is extremely important. So we want to be able to maintain the existing tower. And I know that, I see what you mean about the vertical antennas and the branches not extending out far enough. But I also see that those branches ha, are those antennas have fairly new socks, and they're pretty tight together. I'm not saying nothing can be done, don't get me wrong, because I don't know. And even if you had a tree manufacturer on here, they couldn't look at that and say, this can be done, that can be done, without doing a full structural analysis of of the tree. It, but it just, it can be very difficult for us sometimes, because the towers are built legally at the time and through various measures and different legislations that have been passed at a federal level, we're allowed to do certain things um, that when it comes time to renew the permit, you know, it might run counter to some of that. And we're we're here to work with you though. I mean, we want to make it work too. We obviously have tenants that we need to please, and we do not want to upset them. Um, but we're also a tenant of the city of Campbell. So we understand that. So, you know, we we try to be reasonable, I think.
Great. And if I can, I'll just pick them up on two points that we just raised there. So one was the uh, the street view comment. So this is actually showing before and after the EFR. So this is the old or more original color, is more of like a blue atlas cedar color. And now, as they've re-socked it and they've redone the facility, when they did a little bit of a height extension, it did change the color. So you're going from that lighter, paler appearance to this darker green. Um, I don't know how, when I had a better image earlier, but so that's one discussion point. Two, when we're gonna be crafting the condition of approval. So based on the SARC direction I've heard tonight, we're gonna be exploring um, minimally, looking at adding a couple additional branches and branch length around these antennas. But we'll be careful, staff, to condition it such a way or to craft conditions which provide some flexibility, a little bit of an out based on structural limitations. So say to the extent feasible that they shall, you know, do X, X, and Y, pending, you know, further study and analysis by a structural engineer. And the conclusions of that would all be to the satisfaction of the community development director. So we can defer some of that down to the staff level to just make sure that we've vetted that, made sure that we've done the best we can based on the the physical limitations of the site, if that's our interest.
Yeah, I'd I'd agree with that. The the last thing that I would want to have happen is make it so that it's infeasible to have the tower there, which I think is like, I would I would much rather, if it's the only thing feasible, I'd much rather have the tower looking exactly as it is now than to not have cell coverage there, or not have as good cell coverage there. Like, it just, if it can be done feasibly, like basically, Stephen, what you said. Like, I I agree with that.
Yeah, I I would, I would as well. I uh, and I don't know how long the this permit, if that's the right word, would last, Stephen, but I don't know if it's uh, because I know Jake was mentioning that uh, I guess the leaves get bleached out over time. So the next time it comes up, does the city look at it and say, hey, it's gotten a little bit, run down a little bit, can we?
We do. So these sites, they're approved for ten years, and every ten years, as they come up for renewal, we do look at those things like maintenance issues, because they unlike the the home example, which was given a moment ago, where people have, you know, home ownership interest stake and maintaining their property and making it look nice and good, what they live in and having sometimes um, uh, cell sites are a little bit sometimes far and away from anyone of interest at times, that they do service the sites, but as far as going to service it for color, and um, that's less common. So that's why we do have that ten-year renewal process, where we just take a quick look. Everything's looking good. Branches are there that are supposed to be there. They haven't been wind swept away or otherwise, and we just may replace what's missing. And so, yeah, every ten years, to be sure.
Good, thanks, thanks.
Okay, well, with that, I think I've got pretty good feedback. Were there any other comments the commission would like to make tonight, SARC?
Um, I just had a a question. So the the new wireless ordinance, does this mean that all all antennas have to be on these faux trees as opposed to being on rooftops?
No, so actually, the the city's wireless facilities design guidelines is very progressive in a lot of ways. It blossoms any endless innovation in terms of site design and placement. So you could have rooftop, you could have, we have another item later tonight, and I think that is the one that is increasing height, I like two feet. Um, we can have rooftop cupola designs, you can go inside existing building walls, you can design them to look like water towers, clocks, art features. In fact, on the cover sheet of the wireless facilities design guidelines, we're trying to showcase that we can think a little bit outside the box. It actually includes a, like an art, glass art tower element that was in a central promenade of it, of it in in Europe. So what I'm trying to say is that you don't have to think of these the way that we have historically thought of. You can go all different directions, but it does still also provide for faux trees, faux flagpoles, faux everything, right? So this is regulating on private property. There's different ways, different, different uh, methods make more sense at different locations, and the design guidelines are meant to help guide you in that direction. So but not, a tree like this might not make sense in the middle of the desert, where there's no similar trees. But in this particular case, you do see other trees like it in the in the vicinity. That that does, it's a double-edged sword, because then you do get to do that direct color comparison. But it does help blend in with the other trees as well, because you're you're not, you're looking at a canopy of trees. Alright.
Okay, I, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the guidelines now. Okay, that's, that's really nifty. So, thank you. Yeah, I think we all set?
Yeah, we're all set. And I'll just mention, Adam, if you click on the cover sheet, that's actually a hyperlink to Google Street View on those uh, design guidelines.
Oh, neato.
Alrighty. I guess have a great evening. I'll see you tonight at seven thirty.
Thank you.
Thanks.
At seven thirty. Thank you.